I don't know.
Okay, it's five o'clock. We'll get started. I called over the Village Board of Oregon Board for Monday, November 3rd, 2025. I would ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Higgins, Kirchdorfer.
Here.
Knipfer.
Here.
Marks.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Van Campen.
Here, thank you. Item 3, approval of October 20th, 2025, Village Board meeting minutes, if correct. Staff recommendation motion to approve. Looks like Tim and Amanda. Questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item 4, public appearances, comments, and communications. Item for discussion and/or possible action. A, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Under the open meetings law, this agenda item allows the board to receive information and to ask questions of a presenter to facilitate a better understanding of the information. Board members may discuss procedural matters relating to the information, such as whether the information should be directed to staff, referred to a committee, or placed on a future board agenda. However, board members may not expand their discussion beyond such procedural manners. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Otherwise, the agenda will proceed as posted. We have a couple registered speakers. I'll start with Kevin DeLaMaye. Thank you. He's here to speak on item 7D regarding the pickleball request from the park board. Please come up. And if you could state your name and address for the record and pull the microphone up close, please, so we can hear you.
Does that work?
Yeah, great.
All righty. Kevin DeLorme. I actually live in Belleville, Wisconsin. Do you need my specific address, or?
Sure, why not?
556 Kelly Drive in Belleville, Wisconsin. Howdy, folks, and thank you for allowing me to talk. My name's Kevin DeLorme, and I want to provide a couple insights that might be helpful when you guys are discussing the pickleball agenda for lights. I've been playing for about five years, and I play in a lot of locations. We don't have courts in Belleville. I play in Mount Horeb, Verona, Fitchburg, Madison, McFarland, Janesville, and my favorite place is Oregon. I love playing here. Village offers quality playing experiences at reasonable prices, reasonable prices, and I've been made lasting friendships with the people I've met. The two facets that I believe are relevant to the discussion are opportunity and investment. One thing that has definitely changed in the five years I've been playing is the number of kids that are now playing. I've seen this change in all the places I play, but the most growth has been here in Oregon. But these kids have a limited window when they can play. They're in school during the day, possibly have extracurricular activities, or homework after school. Later evenings is their best time to play when it's dark. You have an opportunity to provide these kids with a great way to spend their time. Get them away from their phones, video games, computers, tablets, and most importantly, social media. This is an opportunity for them to socialize in a physical presence. This can be done with their friends, families, peers, and even my generation of players. Anything that can be done to get them away from technology is a golden opportunity. The second facet I mentioned is investment. Not an investment with dollars and return, but an investment in the future. These kids are the future. They will become adults. Some will have families. Many will live and work and play in a community. Some of them could become village board members. Invest in them by providing a way for them to have fun, interact, get outdoors, be active, and allow them to create lasting memories. Who knows? Maybe just maybe some of these kids will bring their families down to the park to play pickleball under the lights, right here in Oregon. Wouldn't that be cool? That would be one of the most positive and successful investments the village could make. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do I wait for any questions or comments?
Are there questions? Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jane Mahoney to speak on item 7A. Just state your, Dr. Mahoney, name and address for the record, and speak close to the microphone, please. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jane Mahoney, and I live at 655 Sumach Street in Oregon. I'm a retired physician, a member of the Oregon Area Progressives, and also the Oregon Area Immigrant Support Network, which formed in February 2025 this year in response to the changing climate that immigrants and people in our country face who are at risk for detainment and deportation. The mission, our mission for the Oregon Area Immigrant Support Network is to provide resources and education of know your rights for immigrants and people who are at risk for deportation, and provide education about resources that are available. So immigrants live in our community, and they work here. They contribute to the fabric and structure of our community. Their kids go to our schools. And they have unique strengths. They also face unique risks and unique needs for services. So the Oregon Area Progressives and Oregon Area Immigrant Support Network worked together over several months to develop a set of requests to the Oregon Village Board to help make Oregon as welcoming a place as possible to immigrants, given their unique circumstances. We, in October, we met with the DEI Committee, and thank you to the DEI Committee for their championing of our recommendations, which will be brought forward in 7A on the agenda. And thank you also for all the legwork that you did to make them actionable. So our ask is that the village board approve these recommendations. That will go a long way to enhancing Oregon as a welcoming community for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
I also have red cards. If anyone would like to see what they're like, I could pass them out, and a list of services that we'd like to have available. Should I?
If you could just leave them right here, maybe we'll do that later. Okay, yeah, just leave them with me, and we'll distribute after. Thank you. Okay, anyone else for public comments? Public comments. Okay, moving on. Item 5, approval of vouchers in the amount of $3,820,755.51. Staff recommendation motion to approve. Tim and Paige. Questions, comments? Lynn?
I have two, although with Lisa out, I can forward them to her via email. The first one is the very first one. Vendor 170 Align Energy Group, Building 60. Sorry, page 12 of the packet.
Looks like a line bill for the wastewater treatment plant.
Interesting. Great, thank you. And then my second one is on page 13, Oregon School District splash pad donation.
That is from the Tourism Commission. That amount, so under $5,000, has typically been handled, or has been handled in the past by the chamber. So they went through the chambers, and they have kind of their criteria that they have to verify, that it supports kind of tourism-related activities. So that was the Tourism Commission's funds being given to the school district for the splash pad project.
Thank you.
And what else? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. We have motion by Tim and second by Paige.
Marks.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Kirchdorfer.
Yes.
Who did I forget? Knipfer.
Yes.
I'm like, that doesn't feel right.
No, it did feel, yeah. All right, thank you.
Sorry.
Consent agenda. Items 6A through J. Staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. That motion by Rick, second by Tom. Questions on any of these items? Tim?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about item D. So that is an agreement for maintenance of stormwater management measures with the K-Cord Homeowners Association. Those would be Habitat for Humanity houses. And so part of what we've created for these Habitat for Humanity homeowners is a couple of expense potentials in the long run, where they're going to have to pay for their road, because that's a private road, and then they're also going to have to pay for stormwater management. And I'm concerned that that puts them in a potential financial distress when they needed a lot of help just to buy their house.
This was part of the original development agreement with Habitat. That was how the property would be arranged for development. So this is just institutionalizing that element of the original development agreement.
So they know this cost?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes. I'll also add, I know Habitat does a lot of work, obviously, with the homeowners ahead of time to make sure that they're set up for success. They are also kind of their own bank, so they handle the mortgage with the homeowners and take into account all of the expenses. So they make sure that housing-related expenses, including HOA costs, do not exceed usually 30% of their income. So they're aware of the cost for this, and that's kind of included in what, how the monthly payments are set up for each individual family, so that doesn't exceed that 30% income threshold.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, anybody else on agenda items? Seeing none. Motion by Rick, second by Tom. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item 7, reports of committees under for discussion and are possible. Action A, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee want proposals to provide immigrant resource materials in Village Hall and add welcoming language and immigrant resources to the village website. Committee recommendation, motion to add resources to Village Hall, and update wording and research on village website as presented. Speak to this?
Oh, sure. Well, I would love to motion as well, but.
Okay.
So yeah, that's, the packet hopefully explains a lot of that, but the resources would be available downstairs in English and in Spanish. They are local resources. And again, that was in the packet. If you have questions, this also includes the little red cards that were obviously presented. And then for the website, there's a new resident tab when you click on our website. Right now, it does have some resources listed. However, it doesn't say like, welcome at all, like, to villagers. So the language is in the packet as well of just welcome to all, right? We just, I feel like, right, welcome to Oregon. So yeah, all of that's listed there. But yeah, any questions, I'll take them or try to take, try to answer them.
I don't have an objection to any of this. I just want to know where it's going on the website, because it does take a while to find it. I know that within our general vision and mission as a community, that it fits well into that position. And I guess I just want to make sure that it's easily found information. I'm on the residence tab.
I think it's how do I, and then there's a new resident area.
Well, it was under residents, and there's new residents.
Yep. So when you click on new resident, right now, it's just a list of resources. I want like a blurb on the top that says welcome, and then it would have the resources. That's kind of what I envisioned, because that's where, right, new, hopefully, new people are going.
Okay.
I would second the motion.
You did when you spoke. Little minor procedure there for you there, Tom. Someone else have a comment? Tim?
I would just say I support this wholeheartedly. I think it's a great idea.
Anybody else? Lynn?
I will just, obviously, this is a great idea, but I want to applaud the DEI Committee for this. I think this is what committee work is so great at, and really honing in on the things that our residents and parts of our community are really passionate about. And I know that this isn't without a lot of work and detail by Paige and Candy and a lot of others. So I just want to applaud the amount of effort it takes to bring something like this.
It was mostly Jane.
Jane, again, all sorts of people involved. Sorry, I was just sort of speaking on the village side to prepare for the packet, prepare for all of these things. Obviously, we appreciate resident input and the efforts that you're all going through. But I think sometimes we forget how much work this takes.
Okay, Amanda?
I mean, I'm, of course, all for this. Great, this is why we had a DEI Committee, was to promote inclusivity and bring people in, and fabulous. I love that it's all laid out here very neatly, very specific, you know, the resources that we want to list. And I think because of what's happening today, it's extra important that we stick to our principles. So this is saying that, like, whatever's happening, this is what we believe in as the Village of Oregon, that we believe people are important, no matter where they're from, so.
I also support this measure. However, I'd like to make an amendment, and that is that, subject to the village attorney and the police chief's review. Need a second? Second by Tom. Discussion, go ahead.
Yeah, just, you're, you just want to make sure that what we're doing is legal, or not opening us up to any potential.
And the police chief is on board with it.
Okay. So this is just the Village of Oregon website we're talking about.
Right.
Okay, just to clarify.
Okay. All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the amendment. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, okay, back to the main motion. Further discussion on the main motion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you. 7B, Ed Hog Public Art Committee, proposal to accept donated tyrannosaurus. Wow, I got that out. Tyrannosaurus Rex statue from Hy-V Incorporated, and approve installation near intersection of North Alpine Parkway and Jefferson Street along the bike path. Committee is recommendation motion to approve. Tom?
Motion.
Okay, and Rick. Questions, comments?
It'll be cool. I mean, it's 10, it's 10 feet tall, and it's going to be right there on the path. It'll be cool.
Okay.
So we're going to get complaints about dogs barking at it as they walk by? Go ahead.
I have several photos of my children pretending to run from it, so.
Okay, we have a motion by Tom, second by Rick. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
And can we just say thank you, Hy-V?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice donation.
Can you just heard all the kids in Oregon screaming, yes?
Okay, I see. 7C, Planning Commission, one. Resolution number 25-40, a resolution approving a certified survey map adjusting lot lines between 127 Dewey Street and 542 North Main. Commission and staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. Tim and Amanda.
I'm over here.
There you are. Go ahead.
This is just a rearrangement of property lines, neighbors purchasing some backyard property from their backyard neighbors that the neighbors on North Main Street are not using. So this went through Planning Commission earlier in October, just catching up now.
Okay, Tom?
I noted that there were some minor comments yet from the engineer that were outstanding. Is that, do we want to qualify our motion on that?
Those have been cleaned up now. I just didn't get the latest version of the engineer's letter in the packet.
Anybody else? Okay, motion by Tim, second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item 2, resolution number 25-46, a resolution conditionally approving a certified survey map combining lots known as 169, 203, 215, South Main Street. Commission and staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. Amanda and Tim, this is just part of the procedure to create lots for the new building. Everybody on board with that? Anything to add? No. Okay, further discussion. Hearing none. We have a motion by Amanda, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. 7D, Park Board, request directing staff to obtain updating pricing for pickleball court lighting at JC Community Park. Park Board recommendation, direct staff to work with project designer Rettler and the lighting manufacturer Musco Lighting to receive updated pricing on the lights at the pickleball court, and return to Park Board with updated cost estimates. Amanda? Paige, thanks. Okay. Anyway, everyone understand what's going on here, or just we have Elise explain it, or?
We're just getting a quote, right?
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, I'll give a little bit of context to this from the park board side of things. In the last park board meeting, we were approached by the Friends of Pickleball Group, organization of people. They're not an actual group. That's important, I think, that they would be interested in potentially fundraising for this lighting, because it is currently not in the. Thank you, words. And they would like to have a more defined number, specific to just the lighting of the pickleball courts, whereas the number we previously had was for all of JC Community Park. So this is essentially to provide them a number so that they could decide whether or not they'd be interested in fundraising for that. Does that sound about right, Elise?
Yeah, so if you all approve this motion, we work with Rettler, who works with Musco, which is the lighting manufacturer, get an updated price, because I think the one we have is a couple years outdated. See if we're still kind of in the same ballpark, no pun intended. And then, yeah, we would return to Park Board with that number, and I guess kind of get their direction of what the next step is as far as reaching out to the group of folks that are interested, and see if this is something that we'd want to include in a future CIP.
Just, huh?
Do we have an idea of how many poles or lights would have to be erected?
There are bases right now out there. I think probably four, four to six.
In that area.
Yes, it would just be for the pickleball courts.
Other questions? Okay, we have a motion by Amanda, second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item 8, unfinished business under for discussion or possible action. A presentation, a review of the new Oregon Senior Center and Community Gymnasium project construction documents, including site plan, demolition plan, grading and erosion control plan, utility plan, landscape plan, structural, architectural, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, fire protection, and technology drawings, and consider authorization to proceed with the project bidding. Staff recommendation motion to approve construction documents and authorize bidding project after January 1st, 2026. Tom and Amanda. You have more to tell us, Jeff, or pretty much what?
Good evening. I'm Jeff. I'm the owner's rep for the new Oregon Senior Center and Community Gymnasium. There isn't really anything new in this packet as far as the design of the project, other than the MEP drawings, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing detail is in there now, and maybe some more construction details than you've seen previously from OPN. But basically, it's the same design that we approved at the last meeting for the design development drawings. This is just more detail, so it's ready to bid. And I think what we're just looking for is the direction to move forward with bidding.
Okay, questions for Jeff? Okay, Tim?
Yeah. So I spent a lot of time with this document trying to find out exactly what system is being used for heating, and couldn't decipher that from these documents. Might be my lack of familiarity with them.
Okay.
I saw gas, natural gas heat, natural gas for the water heater, but I couldn't determine how the furnace is powered.
So the furnaces and the air that are, there's air handling units that move the air throughout the building, and they use gas-fired for heating. And then there's a chiller or a way to, condensers to provide cooling, but there's also electric baseboard heat that's supplemental around the perimeter at certain window locations. So there's some supplementary electric heat, but the major forced air furnaces are gas-fired.
Okay. Just for my clarification, Jeff, I thought he said last time that the baseboard heat was water. You're saying it's electrical?
I think that it's electric.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
If we would have had a geothermal system, it would have been part of that water system. But I believe here that it is electric, correct.
Actually, I think that's probably better from my standpoint. Okay, let's see. Further discussion. Lynn?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I don't have a question for you, Jeff. I, if you watched the last meeting, or you read the minutes, you know that I was the one dissenting vote in the last meeting to move forward on these construction plans, because I have some pretty serious concerns about the lack of geothermal in this building. However, I am a big proponent of moving forward and being positive and putting support where support is needed. And so I have spoken to lots of parties involved to explain why I voted against moving forward. to explain why I voted against moving forward. Um, tonight, I plan to vote for this because I think that the purpose of this building, the mission of the senior center, the services that it provides and the impact that it, it will give to our community is immense. And it's important, I think, to, to support that. Um, and I will go into the future hoping that we will be able to eventually get this building to a place where it is, um, more carbon neutral, carbon friendly. Um, so just wanted to explain why I'm voting the way I'm voting tonight. Um, I still think that there, you know, are some things lacking here, but I think in general, this is gonna be a great building to serve our community in great ways.
What else? Okay, we have a motion by Kirchdorfer, second by Peterson. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, Jeff. Uh, 8B, um, let's see here. Agreements related to the acquisition of temporary limited easements for planned 2026 East Lincoln Street construction project for Jamie J. Law, Law &amp; Jur, 404 North Main Street in the amount of $1,340 for 651, uh, .99 square feet. Deanna M. Wilson and Casey E. Wilson, 215 East Lincoln Street in the amount of $500 for 239.99 square feet. Norman C. Naylor, 223 East Lincoln Street in the amount of $500 for 239.95 square feet. Whitney E. Math- Matthews, 271 East Lincoln Street in the amount of $2,350 for 1,143.88 square feet. Robert A. Pugh and Catherine A. L. Pugh, 274 East Lincoln Street in the amount of $1,540 for 747.31 square feet. And Michael J. Kugel and Heather Kugel, 406 North O Street in the amount of $1,770 for 860.95 square feet. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented.
I'll make the motion, I don't have to read all that.
Yes. Uh, we have a motion by Tim and a second by Amanda. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item six, uh, items, uh, 8C, uh, cost reimbursement agreement with the state of Wisconsin regarding the proposed Department of Corrections Juvenile Correction Facility Utility Connection located within the city of Pittsburgh. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Tim and Paige? Everybody understand what this is about or? We need someone to talk to us about it? Everybody good?
I'm good.
Okay, motion by Tim, second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, uh, 8D, review draft 2026 Village budget.
All right, so I'm not gonna belabor too much tonight. Um, so the budget document is in the packet again. Um, it is unchanged, the budget itself is unchanged as it's been unchanged for the last few meetings. Um, I added some additional information in there about, um, tax increment finance districts and, and just some background information there. Uh, you can certainly read it at your pleasure, uh, but the budgets and, uh, financial documents are unchanged. Um, couple adjustments, uh, some minor changes, uh, to employee benefit open enrollment, some adds, some subtracts, overall virtually negligible impact to the overall budget. Uh, haven't made the actual changes into the budget yet, until we get all the, you know, last couple of things here before, um, we do the budget approval meeting on November 17th. Uh, so there might be a few, uh, minor line item adjustments in the, in that meeting. Uh, but again, nothing that will be substantially impacting anything. Um, so since the last meeting, we, uh, put the public notice i- in the Oregon Observer that was in last Thursday, so we'll have the public hearing on the 17th. We'll make any final adjustments at that meeting and then we'll ask for the Village Board approval. Uh, as I said, this budget really has not changed at all since initial presentation back on the 6th. And I think we've talked about the budget every meeting since April, um, in some form. So, uh, I don't really have too much else to add at this point, but I'm happy to answer any questions. If you want me to cover anything that we've already covered, re-explain anything, I'm happy to do so. Um, just let me know.
Questions, comments? Guess you've covered it pretty well. Do you need any action tonight?
Nope, no action needed tonight.
All right, thank you.
Um, Phil?
Yes.
Should we just say, for anyone tuning in or attending today, we're not discussing this because we've been discussing it for weeks and weeks and months. And w- w- we have, yeah, discussed it a lot. So it, this is not as if we just got this and we're like, okay, out the door. Um, we have spent some time, Martin has spent, oh my goodness, countless hours tweaking all the little things. So please don't take our inaction as just general.
Rubber stamp?
Yeah, rubber stamp, thank you. Has that image as on the screen? Um, but more just general, uh, awareness of what's going on.
Thank you, that was a well-placed comment. Uh, item, uh, item nine, new business non. Item 10, reports of Village Officers Department heads and consultants. Um, A is Village Administrator Report. Questions? Nope. Uh, B, Village Consulting Engineer Report, September 2025, monthly report for 2025 wastewater upgrade project from Town and Country Engineering. That was in your packet? With pictures? Um, okay, well, moving on to item 11, uh, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events and miscellaneous business. Start with, uh, Tor- head staff.
I have one.
Please.
I would just like to make sure that the community knows that there is no election tomorrow. I've gotten a few phone calls that people think there's a federal election tomorrow. So thankfully, otherwise I miss something, but there is no election, the next election, yeah. The next election is, um, February 17th, if we have a spring primary, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Board members, Tim?
Uh, on the calendar, the Public Works Meeting, we're moving probably until, to the 18th, so it's not on Thanksgiving week.
Okay. Anybody else for, uh, announcements? Amanda?
Public Transportation Committee, who wants to be a member? We have openings, please apply. You don't need any special knowledge, you just have to be interested in bringing public transportation to Oregon. Please sign up. Well, yeah, you gotta come to meetings, but.
Details. Okay, future agenda items. Anyone have something to add? Doesn't sound like it. Item 12, as our business is concluded, without objection, we are adjourned.
Wow, wowzers, that's.